Hey, everybody, everybody. Welcome, welcome. This is Kevin Mahoney, editor and founder of Raging Chicken. Welcome to Raging Chicken's Out to Coop Live. Yes, on Out to Coop Live, we talk to progressives, activists, and troublemakers of all sorts, right from our own backyards from across the country. On Friday, Sean Kitchen and I break down the good, the bad, and the ugly in state and national politics. And you've got to check out our new Wednesday show with Cyril Micalaco. Cyril's a progressive columnist for the Bucks County Courier Times, the intelligencer. And normally on Wednesdays, he joins me to talk about, you know, Bucks County, Pennsylvania, international politics. Well, you can get all our shows by subscribing to our podcasts on Podbean, iTunes, Spotify, or wherever you get your podcasts. You also can help support this show by becoming a patron for as little as five bucks a month. Just go to patreon.com/RCpress. And if you're listening to this show on the Podbean app, well, guess what? You can also show us some love right now by hitting that little green button at the top of your page. You can also help out the show by heading over to our YouTube channel if you're not there already. Make sure you smash that subscribe button, like the stream for this show, and hit that notification bell so you know every time we go live. We're also broadcasting live on Riverside.fm. Join us on Riverside.fm a little bit later in the show, and you can call in. Yes, we'll do that after the break later in the show. Details on how to do that are down below in the description in the YouTube channel tonight. You can join our Discord server too as well. Information on that also in the YouTube channel. And for more PA progressive talk, tune into The Rick Smith Show's livestream at 9:00 PM Eastern on his YouTube channel, Twitter, Facebook, you know, wherever you get your livestream. And make sure you subscribe to his daily show wherever you get your podcasts. And if you go to thericksmithshow.com, it'll show you how to check out his Saturday shows on Free Speech TV and the brand-new one on WBAI in New York. And you must, absolutely must, check out the Sisters of the Night Caucus podcast. Yes, the amazing PA women stirring the political cauldron behind this podcast rock the house, and they know where the bodies are buried. Pretty spooky, right? Well, make sure to follow them on Twitter at @TheNightCaucus and subscribe to their podcasts on Anchor, Spotify, iTunes, wherever you get your podcasts. Once again, attention to all you gamers out there. The Game Inn, that's with two N's. The Game Inn is a Quakertown-based, black family-owned gaming store. They're friends of the show, and they've got everything for Reto N64s, the latest consoles, video games for all platforms, and loads of collectibles, action figures, Funko Pops. Yes, you know, when school comes in, look, school's right around the corner. It's what we're here talking about tonight, that's for sure. You bring your kid, gets an A on their report card, head them on over to The Game Inn, and they get a discount for each A. Yeah, follow them on Twitter at @TheGameInn, that's with two N's. If you've got a question about a game, look for something that's hard to get, yep, just drop them a line at thegameinnpa@gmail.com and look them up on, you know, wherever you get on your social media. That gets the game in in Quakertown. And a special shout-out always goes to Jonathan Mann, who wrote our intro song, "There Are No People in the Future." Check out all his great stuff on his YouTube page and follow him on Twitter at @SongADayman. That's @SongADayman on Twitter. Well, I'll tell you, on tonight's show, we've got a good one for you, folks. This is something we've been talking about quite a bit, not just the past couple of weeks, but the past year, about what's been happening in kind of school boards, kind of across the country, but in particular, right here in Bucks County. On tonight's show, I welcome two candidates for the school board in the Pen Ridge School District, Adrian King and David O'Donnell. Adrian King was raised in a working-class, single-parent home in Warmester, PA. That's where my wife is from too as well, and is a graduate of the Centennial School District. She's a bachelor's of science degree in chemistry from the University of Pittsburgh and a master's of science in pharmaceutical quality assurance and regulatory affairs from Temple University. As one of the few black families in her school district growing up, and often the only black student in her classes, she learned at an early age the value of learning about others and working together while also embracing their differences. She and her family have lived in the Pen Ridge School District since 2007. She has two daughters in elementary school here. And David O'Donnell and his family have lived in the Pen Ridge School District for the past 11 years. He has two children that have benefited from the Pen Ridge school system. He has worked in management positions in retail and hospitality for over 20 years, and he sees the school board as a way of to bridge the bridge between the school district and the community, and he is following in a family tradition of service to his community. Both Adrian and David are running as part of the Pen Ridge United slate of candidates that also include Dawn Curran and Carolyn Ciarrino, which I also hope to have on the show in the coming weeks. This year's campaign is especially contentious as their opposition has embraced much of the right-wing culture war tactics that are infecting school board races throughout Bucks County and across the nation. So we know they got their work cut out for them. Welcome to the show, Adrian. Welcome to the show, David.
Hi, thank you, Kevin.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin.
Hey, so, you know, in full disclosure, I mean, anybody who listens to this show most likely kind of knows this already, but just here, so I have kids in the Pen Ridge School District too as well, so this is a personal fight for me. I have seen what has been the kind of vitriol that's been slowly increasing over the years since I've lived in Percasie. I've been here since 2008. And what I'm finding, this also is happening in, you know, Central Bucks School District, it's happening in Palisades School District, it's happening in North Penn, it's happening in the kind of, you know, right all over the state, really, and across the country. To see that happening right here in your own backyard is kind of, I think it's got to be a wake-up call for anyone because we're talking about our children's future here, right? So why don't we get everyone a little bit acquainted with each of you as kind of a candidate, kind of a little bit of your background and so on. Adrian, why don't we start with you and a little bit about kind of what brought you to this point where you decided to be running for a school board?
Yeah, absolutely. So thank you for that question, Kevin. So I guess being a parent and being a black parent in a community where you're looking to determine, you know, what your children's schooling is going to look at, one of the first things that you do is you look at the demographics. And that was one of the things that my husband and I did as we tried to decide, you know, were we going to send our kids to private school? Were we going to put them in public school? What is it that we were going to do? And when we saw that African-Americans in the Pen Ridge School District were 2% or slightly less than 2%, I think at that time, we knew that we had to be involved. We started meeting with the school district even before we put our kids in the school district to ask questions. You know, what are you doing from a social and emotional learning perspective in your schools? You know, how are you making, you know, all children feel like they're a part of the school? What books do you have? What do you have hanging on your walls? Things like that. So we started having those conversations even before our daughter started, you know, his daughter started in the district. We did make the decision to come into the district, but we made the decision that we were going to be part of the district, we were going to be part of the community, and that, you know, we were going to be very vocal and very present. And so, you know, that has evolved into me running for school board, but not just for my girls. I think over the summer, as we really started to get out, and not just this summer, but previous summers, and started to meet other community members, and even now with me running and people knowing who I am, I get so many messages from community members that feel the same way. And it may be from a race perspective, it may be from a cultural perspective, it may be from a learning perspective, it may be from a socioeconomic perspective, it could be from a family, you know, makeup perspective. But so many people I've heard from, and I think that was what pushed me, right? I know that my kids are going to be okay because I'm going to make sure that my kids are okay, but my care is for more than just my children, right? Because my children are one part, right, of the whole community, right? And so that's what has brought me here to this point of wanting to, you know, take that seat at the table and be a voice, right, that I feel like has been missing from our school district. And I think, I haven't done the actual research, I believe that I am the first black American to run for office in the Pen Ridge School District.
Well, it's fantastic. I mean, I don't want to jump the gun here a little bit too as well, but so much of what you just told about kind of your story about coming into the district has everything to do with the exact kind of debates that are happening right now in the school boards, which is just kind of like, you know, wanting to make sure, like, all kids, right, get access to the best possible education and care in the school district. But I don't want to jump, get us too far ahead here. David, what brings you here?
So, I mean, I've been living in the Pen Ridge community for roughly 10 years at this point. We were fortunate to move up this way as, you know, we came from the Philly area. I'm originally from New York.
New York as in New York, New York, or?
Just north of it, Rockland County, New York.
Gotcha. I grew up in Utica, New York, so I always have to ask if there's a, you know, central New Yorker in the house or whatever.
But yeah, so, you know, working in retail and hotels never really afforded me a lot of time to be able to get very involved with the community and everything. But COVID offered this opportunity that I probably wouldn't really paid too much attention to previously, even though I've always wanted to be involved in the community on that level. You know, I started coaching my, you know, helping coach my son's baseball team, and I was like, hey, I can actually create this kind of time and everything, and saw how the landscape of everything was, and I wanted to make sure that I can be a proper voice, you know, especially with my experience in the management and everything. And, you know, I'd like to think of myself as rather level-headed and being able to bring ideas to the table and everything, but I want to make sure that we provide exactly what I expect. We treat people with decency, we educate them, and we create the best possible adults we can out of our school district. You know, I even, you know, when I had the opportunity to buy my house and everything, I bought specifically in the school district because I loved the school that my kids went to, and I want to continue that, and I want to make it the best possible version it can be.
Yeah, you know, it's incredible. There's some things that are like, you know, obviously the hospitality industry, I worked in food service for kind of like well over a decade, right, in different kind of catering things, different large event stuff. And you, you know, you're taught basically to treat everybody with respect, even those people that you might not agree with, or even the ones that are not exactly kind of at the table that are, you know, the ones that you want to even see ever again for the rest of your life, right? But there's just kind of that engagement. And it seems to be those also the kind of thing that we learn, well, we're all told we're supposed to learn, right, about how we treat each other. But we also know that we live in a world that's not, that's not like that, right? And it's, it seems to me that there's this interesting kind of connection between the, or I would say difference, between the kind of thing that we're supposed to raise our kids in in school and the charge of what happens in a, in a public school, right, or any school for that matter. Because we're not just teaching, you know, like our kids about how to be an individual, right, with our own family values. We're teaching them how to be in this society, to be a citizen, to be a participant in that. And that's something that nobody can do alone, right? And that's something that has to be done kind of in concert with others, which is one of the things that has been so exciting about seeing, you know, a lot of what you all have been talking about in your campaign. So by contrast, and you know, again, I'm not, I'm not here to get into like, you know, like call-outs and things like that. It's not the point. But my concern, like as I began with the show, has been, there's been an increasing tenor on the school board that has gotten, in my view, right, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it's been increasingly, say divisive and concerning to me as a parent, right? Just because it's like, you know, people on the school board, they have a role in our community that are also, you know, setting policy for our schools. And so I'm concerned at two levels. One, you've got these adults in our community that are, you know, saying things about students on social media and so on like this. I'm like, you gotta be kidding me, right? But more so, those school board meetings have become this kind of like place of divisiveness in our community, right? And it seems like that'd just be the last place that this should be carried out kind of in our schools. So I'm curious about each of your kind of reflections on kind of where we're at at this point, right? And kind of why we need to have the kind of, you know, the kind of experience and the backgrounds that you all bring to this, bring to the table. David, why don't you pick us up first on this one?
So I completely agree with you. I mean, at this point, we're essentially just yelling at each other across the table. You know, we try to sit there and listen to the questions that are coming about and everything. And even with our most recent meeting, we really tried to understand where their actual issues lie, you know? Like, we, we want to be able to validate their thoughts, their emotions and everything, but the truth is, is that I don't know if there is a version of that. Like, they're coming at a place where, you know, it's their way or the highway. We're not trying to converse and try to make things better. It's like, they don't even want to start the conversation. So they'll just try to yell louder and louder in order to get their way. And it's, it's just not the proper way to do it. But even the structure of these meetings and everything is not set up in a way for conversation. You know, we have committee meetings where there's not really discussion between us and the school board. It's, they're just talking amongst each other to try to figure things out. And then we have, you know, the monthly, you know, meeting, a school board meeting where we're sitting there and, yeah, okay, we can talk to them, but we're not actually talking to them. We get three minutes to basically yell at them and tell them why we don't agree with them or why we do agree with them. There's zero conversation going on, you know? You know, I would love to be able to incorporate some level of town hall meetings or better conversation where, you know, it's actual involvement, not just, I don't agree with you, let me explain to you why. You know, like, we need to be able to come together and at least be able to address these things. It's, it's just too ugly at this point. I'm worried that it's going to start getting violent at a certain point. Like, we've already seen that in other school districts. There's simply no need for any of that.
Yeah, this happened last week, right? There were, there were people being threatened at school board meeting. There was some pushing and shoving. I don't know if it was Pensbury or I don't know if it was one of the other districts where this took place. And it feels like that at one point, especially when, you know, I mean, look, I'm no body, body language expert, but especially when you see some members on the board, there's parents that are coming up and saying things that are really concerning. They're just kind of sitting back and like, okay, next. You know, and it feels like nobody has an investment in being heard. But Adrian, what's your take on this?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, I'll give the experience that I had. So I did attend our last committee meeting, which was the meeting where we had 100-plus, you know, community members from the Pen Ridge for Educational Liberty show up and voiced their concerns. And when I walked into that room and I saw, you know, the sea of green and I saw all of these people there, I made the conscious decision to say, you know what? This is a unique opportunity for me to hear what they have to say. And I made the conscious decision not to speak during that meeting. I was there to listen. I was not there to listen to respond. And I listened to what every single person said in that room, while it was hard, because I watched people that I go to church with, I watched people that have been around my children, I watched people that have done work in my home, I watched people that I work with at my nine-to-five, go up and say things that challenged learning about people like me. And that was very hard for me, for me and my husband to sit through, right? But it was important for us to do that, because as David said, we do need to learn to listen to each other, because we have to try to understand, we are all part of the same community, and we do have to find sort of that common ground. What are we all working towards, right? I think you started the show by saying, you know, can we agree that we want all students to feel safe, to feel protected, to feel like they're heard, right, to have all the tools they need to succeed? If we can start from there and then talk about the how we get there, but we, right now, it just seems like there are so many different visions for what true north is, and everybody's heading in their own direction, right? And that's no way to run a school district. It's no way to bring a community together.
Yeah, 100%. And I mean, I've seen some of these meetings too, and I know, we should say that this, was it Pen Ridge, Pen Ridge, what is it? Pen Ridge Liberty? What is what the name of the organization?
Pen Ridge for Educational Liberty.
For Educational Liberty, right? So these are, this is, you know, I will editorialize on this, because it's like, you know, these are folks that are showing up to the meetings that very much we saw in the spirit of the Tea Party during the kind of, you know, the medic, you know, the Medicare reform or the, sorry, medical care reform basically built during the Barack Obama state. They would show up, there's like shouting people down, they're saying all sorts of things that are outrageous, you know, and even sometimes they'll sound like they're, you know, they're like they're making points. But very often, it doesn't feel like it's there for dialogue. It's there to shut things down. And, you know, this is one of the concerns that I have about this, you know, and I teach, like I said, at Kutztown University, I teach writing and rhetoric and social movements and things like this. And one of the things I always talk about in the, in the, in the classroom is like, you know, look, I've got very, very strong and well-defined political opinions and ideas and positions, right? I'm an organizer, I'm an activist and so on. But we come in the classroom, what we're there in the classroom to do, in my view, is to model democracy, right? And democracy requires people to participate, right? It requires us to be able to hear, right, difference and division and opposition, right? And so I'm never, you know, there's going to be certain people that are never going, that are never going to convince me of their position, right? But in that moment, everyone has to be able to articulate their best case, right, before we move forward and then decide collectively, majority rule, right, about how we move forward. And so those things are different. What's, what's happening in the school board meetings right now seems very often to be, you know, about power politics as opposed to kind of a really kind of thoughtful discussion about what's going to be best for our kids, right? So having said that, you know, right now, there's, there's a couple of issues that are right on the, you know, on the front burner, right? We've seen, you know, I've got right down the street from me in the corner of Callow Hill and Branch Street, right, the giant signs that are basically, you know, they basically, you might as well be calling DEI, which is diversity, equity, and inclusion, right? How to make sure that every kid that shows up in our school feels like they're part of that community and have the best chance to learn. I mean, the kind of things that Dr. Seuss would talk about, even though they, you know, whatever, we don't have to get the Dr. Seuss thing. But, you know, so the DEI thing, which is linking up with this national kind of craziness in my mind around critical race theory, which is being completely misused, but it's being used to fan these flames of like, I don't know what else to call it, but say, kind of racial resentment is what it feels like very much in there. So that, then on the one hand, and then on the other hand, we've got like the spiking Delta variant of COVID, right, which, and you know, anyone who's got a kid in elementary school right now, me included, right, has got a kid that doesn't yet, does not yet qualify for a vaccine. So these are two serious issues, one about how kids are going to learn best and how we make sure that, that, you know, that we are, can accomplish that as a district. On the other hand, how we keep them safe, right? So, you know, I don't know who want to kind of jump in first on this one, or maybe we could take one at a time, especially since the, well, why don't we start with the DEI stuff, especially because there's been flyers that have been circulating now all throughout the community with just like, you know, misinformation and what just seems like, you know, like I said, racial resentment in many ways. But like, what do you see happening kind of in this score? I don't know who'd like to take that one up first?
Yeah, so I'll take that. I'll take a stab at that first. And so I think you described it very, very correctly, right? I feel like, you know, there's, there's the definition of what DEI is, diversity, equity, and inclusion. I don't even like to use acronyms anymore. I have to say the words out so that someone can't misconstrue it as something else, right? So, yeah, diversity, equity, and inclusion, right? Those definitions are what they are, right? And I feel like there's this national movement that has come, that has now flipped and turned that upside down to something else, right? I don't know what that is based on, right? I don't know if there were a few examples out there that that's now sort of being exaggerated, that that's what's going to happen everywhere. But really, the basis of the work that has been, you know, ongoing here in the district was about just making every student, putting students at the center, all students at the center, right? And, and making them feel like they are a part of the school. Again, giving them the tools that they need, right? When we start to look at, you know, some of the, the data that's out there and, and making sure, you know, that, that all students have, you know, equal access to opportunities, right, and things like that. So that's, that's what the overall DEI is, it's all about. It's, it's looking at sort of what's going on here in our district, right? And I know that our district has to go some ways in order to get that exact data. I'm sure that there's, there is, I know that there are some data out there, but we do have to like reach out to the community and get that data to sort of understand those different perspectives, right, in a broad perspective, to make sure that whatever we're moving forward with is, is meeting the needs of here in Pen Ridge, right? But in no way has any work that I've been a part of, whether it be at the district level or at my kid's school, in any way isolated children, right, made children feel like they are, they are less than, right? You know, made, you know, put down police. Like, I think that's something that was on the flyer, you know, making kids hate police.
And you're just like, where does that even come from?
Yeah, it seems like that's coming from somewhere else and it's being put on as something that's happening here. But as part of all of the efforts, and I know that our superintendent has said in numerous occasions what the intent of the work is here, but for some reason, even with a current sitting board member who is on, you know, the opposite side of the ticket, they're still putting out things that are, that are anti to what is being told to them from the superintendent. You know, the work that has gone on to overhaul and look at our curriculum from a culturally responsive perspective, and I have to say that out too. I can't, it used to be called CRT, but I can't say it as CRT anymore because now it's, it's changed its definition, right? But culturally responsive teaching or training is something that has been going on. I've talked to people that have been in this work for 20, 25 years, right? So it's nothing new. It's nothing new. It's something that, that when I first, before I, we came in the district and we were talking, you know, to the administration then, they were looking and working on doing stuff then, right? It's just evolved on how you do it, what it looks like, things like that, because you want to keep up with, with, with your curriculum, right? I think the curriculum overhaul that's happening now, I think what I heard stated is some of that curriculum was from like 1997, right? And we're just now looking at it to, to bring it up to where it needs to be, right, to make sure that we're preparing our students, not just for today, but for the future. And like you said, this global interaction, right? Not for them to sort of be in an isolated tunnel by themselves, but this global interaction with whoever, you know, they're working for, working with, or, you know, just meeting in the grocery store, you know, or what have you.
Exactly. I mean, that, you said it better than I ever possibly could, right there. And it's like, you know, that's what I look at as, because the world changes, right? You know, as an educator myself, right, or even just kind of as a thoughtful person, it was like, you know that the world is changing around. And then when you're dealing with an education, you have to actually be cognizant of what's happening in the community, whatever changes they are. You know, I grew up in Utica, New York, as I was saying earlier, and, you know, I was just back visiting my folks. And, you know, it used to be, there's one section of town in East Utica that was all where kind of was an Italian section of Utica. It was like, it's basically like South Philly of Utica, New York, is really like same accent, same food, right across the board, right? And that, over time, that has changed now. And because of a bunch, there was refugee programs, there's a refugee center in Oneida County up there and stuff. Now we have like a huge thriving Bosnian population, a huge thriving Vietnamese population, a Dominican population in that area that used to be Italian, and most of those folks moved on in part because, you know, it was an industrial town, all the jobs left, and so people left that area for a while. And so it's only natural at that point, if you're thinking about educating kids in school, right, to be saying, hey, maybe there's things about these students that we don't know that I'd want, as a teacher, I would want to know to how best reach those students. And I'm like, that's why this whole DEI stuff, you know, again, diversity, equity, inclusion, in my mind, is like one of the most uncontroversial things that I could see out there, because it's just about saying, okay, who are our kids right now? Let's find out what they're out there, and how do we meet their needs? I mean, I don't understand why that's hard.
Yeah, I, I agree. And I think one of the areas that I'm hearing the, the most opposition to, because really, from a diversity perspective, there's nothing you can do. The diversity's here, right? And you don't even have to manufacture that. It's here, right?
Oh, we just saw the census report, right? We just saw the census report about this, right?
Yeah, you just have to look at it and see. But I think the one that I've heard the most opposition to is, is the word equity, right? Because there's a lens being put on it that means that basically kids are being allowed to skate, right, so that all kids come out with the same equal outcome, right? Everybody's getting an A, but not everybody's pulling their weight, right? And that's not the definition of equity, right? That's not the definition at all, right? Equity is about making sure that everyone has fair access, equal access, right, impartial access to what it is that they need in order to be successful, right? And so even if we talk about, if the other top, top, subject that you brought up, right, COVID and the Delta variant and things like that, we talk about, you know, yes, our number one priority is for all students to be in school, right? But when you put that equity lens on it, right, you have to understand that there's different populations of students that have different needs in order to make that happen, right? And it's our responsibility as leaders in the school districts, school board administrators, to look at those different populations and plan for those, right, and equip for those, and make sure that all of those student populations have what they need, and so that the maximum amount of students can be in person, in school, 100% of the time.
100%. So like, so David, let me, so you're telling me, you guys are telling me then, we're not, we're not worried about the infiltration of kind of like 19 to 20 communists into our school boards in order to kind of take over our kids' brains, right? But we're actually just trying to meet our kids' schools, their needs, right?
You know, it's crazy, because when I look at this, like, I went into that meeting trying to understand where the actual issues, you know, lied, right? And to me, it felt constantly like we were going into a place where they were non-starters, right? And, but where was the non-starter? You know, the, the first thing they'll do is they'll bring out the race card, like, I'm not a racist, or, you know, I don't want my child to be shamed. And I'm like, I don't understand any of those things. Like, you know, my family's been here since nearly the- my family's been here since nearly the start of this country. Listen, I'm not ashamed. Like, are there things we did wrong? Absolutely. I didn't do them. So I'm going to work to do better. I'm going to work to make sure that we don't repeat history, that we treat people properly. And, you know, it's funny, like the one, the one statement that keeps resounding in my mind that just destroys me is, what was the cost? Here's the cost. Nothing. There is no cost.
Yeah.
It doesn't cost you anything to treat somebody with decency. It doesn't cost you anything to be okay with understanding that there are other things that are maybe beyond your reach, that you didn't experience in your life that others have. What, what it entails is that you have an open mind, that you have a little bit of decency, that you do all the things that you've been preaching about since you've been going to church, you know? Like you treat others with respect, you understand what they need, you understand what their sensitivities are. I do this on a daily basis in my job, you know? Like I have to be able to speak to everyone. Doesn't matter your background, doesn't matter your education, doesn't matter how much money you have. I have to speak to everyone. And if I don't understand those sensitivities, if I don't understand the different stories that we bring to the table and the different experiences, we're not successful at anything at that point. All we're going to do is sit here and be like, well, this guy's cool. It was fine. I'm like, how did that work for you?
Well, I mean, and how.
This guy's cool didn't work for you.
Right.
You were not a well-adjusted, a human being at this point. You can't even handle this basic topic.
Well, that, that's exactly the, my, and there's exactly my concern, right? There's my concern is that if we, if we remove difference, right? They try to erase any kind of different experience, like from our educational, educational curriculum. We just give them some kind of whitewashed version of the way the world is supposed to be, based upon their little corner of the world, right? You know, that's not preparing kids for the future that actually exists. It's preparing them for some sort of 1950s fantasy, right? In which people were getting lynched, by the way, right? Um, it wasn't some sort of kind of like nice little kind of Norman Rockwell painting and stuff. And you know what? As a kid, you know, I mean, as a parent, I'm talking to my kids about this stuff all the time, right? When they can't understand like, you know, I don't understand why this person had this reaction to something other. And so we talk it through, right? And then they, a lot of times they ended up kind of having follow-up conversations with that very person, right? Because they wanted to understand. And it's only then we've got to get, understand where the perspectives come from, that we have any hope whatsoever of moving forward together as a community, as a state, as a country. Um, and if we take away our kids' ability, like this, or we take away the ability for our kids to grapple with difficult things, right? And different people, different ideas, different sets of things, then that's basically kind of setting the ground. You know, again, I don't want to go, get too far out here, but that's setting the ground of kind of eroding away our democracy, right? About, or any hope of a kind of the multiracial democracy that we have, right? Um, and, and that's where I start getting really concerned because I'm like, man, Mike, you know, my kids are not going to have that opportunity if a lot of what, you know, this kind of whitewashing of history, this whitewashing of the curriculum, or the refusal to address people right in front of their faces, you know? Um, and I have to say, one of the things that my experience in the Pen Ridge School District at, at Guth in particular has been, you know, really kind of astounding to see, you know, um, lots of kind of say immigrant kids who have come into class, right? Kind of Spanish speaking kids and the teachers working with those students and the other students in the class as a way of kind of including them in the classroom. I mean, in my day, when I was growing, that never would have happened. Never would have happened. That kid would have been marginalized and put in some other room for kind of like, you know, reading or something. And instead, that kid is now a vibrant part of the classroom. And my kid comes home telling me about the Spanish words that they learned that day. I'm like, this is like the best case scenario of education in my mind. So. But so, I mean, not only do we have this stuff on, say, you know, the, the diversity, equity and inclusion stuff, is that we're facing the pandemic, right? We're right up against this and now we've got the, the spiking Delta variant. And it seems like we're, we're seeing the same kind of culture warrior, warrior kind of issues arising around that. And there seems to be some real concerns with our kids. So, I mean, David, when you're looking, kind of coming into the fall and looking at where, let's say, Pen Ridge School District is right now, or what we need to be doing right now, where are you falling on that or what's your thoughts on it?
I mean, it's, it's the same thought process, right? They put their foot in the sand. This is what we want and only what we want. I, it's not that simple. You, just like any other policy you make, anytime you deal with health, you deal with safety, it's for all. You're not just cherry picking people out, you know? You know, even with the recent, you know, developments of like the recommendations from, uh, Dr. Damsker and, you know, lining that up with state recommendations, with CDC, with American Association of Pediatric, like all these things, when they all align so easily, these decisions shouldn't be hard. They really shouldn't be.
Yeah.
But we make them hard because, you know, well, they should go maskless. It's like, okay, we'll get them vaccinated.
No.
These are complicated things. It's, it's simple cause and effect.
Yeah.
You know? Anybody who's ever dealt with any virus ever knows that it's going to try to change for it to survive. Well, how do we beat that? We do the things we need to do to make that happen. This isn't the first or the last time we're ever going to deal with this. But the type of plans we need to build aren't just about safety. It's also being able to be able to execute. The way the plan is built right now, the slightest issue is going to throw us in a tailspin. All of a sudden, kids won't be able to go to school, teachers will have to readjust. It's too complicated and it doesn't allow for flexibility. So it, it just doesn't work. And the fact that all these people are so on board with it and touting it so hardly, it's, it's unnecessary. It's like, we don't have to be this hard line. We can be flexible with this. We can adjust as things get better. The CDC already pushes us at 80, what was it? 58% fully vaccinated, 71% with at least one dose. And right now we are in the second highest tier of community transmission. We are substantial, which means we are dangerous right now. We need to be paying attention. And if we're not, that means we're going to lead into issues. We already see what the South is going through with the states that aren't as well vaccinated. Why do we need to keep having experience after experience to tell us what we did wrong?
100%. And I have to say, you know, and even with those numbers of vaccination, right? 58%, over 70% and stuff, we're talking about of people eligible for the vaccine, right? But what Adrian, what you were bringing up earlier on to exactly on this issue is that, you know, under 12 years old, which means all those kids in elementary school right now, aren't even eligible for the vaccine. So that means that these policies, I mean, we're not even making distinctions between, say, what's happening in the middle school versus what's happening in the elementary school, based upon real world data from the medical community, right? So that's where I, you know, start looking at this because those numbers, even like if you're talking about 70% vaccines in certain areas, that's a little bit misleading, right? When we're talking about our kids in schools, right? So Adrian, I know this has been one of the issues that you've been paying a lot of attention to and have got concerns. And so, I mean, you, you mentioned this a little bit already. So walk us in a little bit where, kind of where things stand at this point and why you see this is actually such a necessary issue going into the fall.
Yeah. And, and I, I agree a lot with what, what David said. Um, and like I, I have two that are in elementary, third and, and fourth, right? So they're right in that pocket of, of ones that are not able to, to get vaccinated, right? And, and, um, you know, we have vulnerable populations of, you know, people in our family and in our household, right? And so even with this Delta variant, you know, what we're hearing is even if you are vaccinated, you can still get it and it could still hit you pretty hard, right? And so we want to just, we want to make sure that, you know, we're, we're, we're putting safety first, right? In our schools and for families, you know, at, at home as well. And I, I really, yes, I, 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 I'd love the fact, right? That we have options, right? So you can wear a mask if you want, you cannot wear a mask if, if you do not want to. But what I want to make sure is that for those that do have to wear a mask, whether it's because the student is vulnerable, right? Or the student is coming in contact regularly with someone that's vulnerable, right? That we do the most we can to provide more options for them other than, hey, virtual school your kid. Put your kid in cyber school, right? What, what other options can we look at within our schools? You know, I know that at this late date, it may be hard, but could we do a dedicated classroom with a dedicated vaccinated teacher, right? Could we do something like that? You know, could, could we, um, you know, are there other things that we could look at, right? So that we can bring those students together, right? And then you and I were talking about at the start of the show, it's the social aspect too. And I'm hearing that a little bit from my, my nine-year-old, right? Where she's asking like, so when I'm in school, mom, you, you, what, what do you want me to do? You know, is everybody going to be doing this or is it just going to be me, right? And so that's something that, that, that me as, that me as a parent, like even when we go out right now and we go inside or certain places and I have my kids put on a mask, even though I am vaccinated, I will put on a mask too because I want to model that behavior for my children, right? I don't want them to feel that I am making them do something that I would not do, right? And, and I don't want them to feel singled out or, or left out, right? So what, what can we do in our schools to help, you know, our, our students, you know, that, that have to wear masks, right? For some reason, um, you know, feel that way too, right? Feel like they're not the only ones, feel like they have a supportive environment, right? And feel like they get that opportunity. We all want our children back in school. I want my kids back in school. They want to be back in school. They want to be front with their teachers and, and with their, their classmates, right? But how can we do that in the most safe manner? And we did, like, we've been talking as a group, we looked at the most recent plan that came from Dr. Damsler and, and crew and, and saw, you know, the recommendation for mask wearing, you know, if they come in contact with a COVID positive case, you know, in school and, and for teacher vaccinations and, you know, masks on public transportation, which it seems like they're lumping in the buses as well there too, right? So I want to see if our plan in our districts is, is going to adapt these things or not. Because right now, as of what we've seen, they, they had not.
Absolutely. You know, and I look at this as, you know, it's something, you know, I grew up in, you know, in, in Irish Catholic family, right? I grew up in like, and one of the things I remember hearing from, uh, from the, you know, as young as I can imagine was like, you know, that that I do to the least among us, so you do unto me, right? This is the whole idea is that, you know, we have to make sure we take care of all that. And then as someone who's said, you know, you know, I'm, I'm steeped in union traditions and in kind of, in kind of social justice movements and things like this. And, you know, I think about that choice to wear a mask, even though when I'm vaccinated, is, is about solidarity, right? About solidarity of those ones, even though if I can't do it, if I have an opportunity of both modeling, as you're saying this, but now with its Delta variant, if I had the, you know, if I, if it's possible for me to spread it, even if I don't get that, right? Why would I not just take a little inconvenience? Do I like, I can't stand wearing a mask, but you know, I'm doing it because I know that the last thing I'd want to do is be the cause of somebody else's downfall, right? And, and so we do this together. We could defeat this thing, right? Um, it's only when we have this kind of separation, which we really find that we're turning something that should be just about common sense into, like, I don't even know what it is, if you know what I mean.
Yeah. I used to travel a lot for work and I used to go to Japan and China a lot. And over the, over those countries, mask wearing was, like, they always did it. If you remember, Michael Jackson used to always wear a mask too, and he would travel over there too. And I remember asking one of my Japanese coworkers one day when he came into work with a mask, and he was the only one with the mask on, and his response was exactly what you just said. Me wearing a mask is more about protecting you than is about myself.
Yeah. I have this little mask that I got, uh, that's sitting in the front of my car that says, my mask protects me, or protects you, your mask protects me. This is, this is the principle that we're working on here. Well, cool. Um, but you know, one thing I want to make sure that we don't kind of get out of here tonight without doing is to make sure that, um, people know how they get in touch with your campaign and how people can actually come out to help, right? Um, because if I want to say anything, anybody who's listening to this show, if you're listening live right now, tonight, or if you're listening on the podcast afterwards, um, what we need to be doing, um, right here in the Pen Ridge School District and throughout Bucks County and the state and so on, in our listening area, is kind of getting involved with these local races. Because, um, you know, you've heard me tell the story again, and I don't want to keep on repeating myself, but I'm going to do it anyways here. One of the things that happened in, in 2010, right? Is that we saw a shift in strategy, political strategy from the national level down to the state level. And basically people were unprepared at the state level for the kind of assaults that went on against our democracy. We're seeing a similar thing that's happening right now at the school board level. I mean, you've heard us talk about the keeping kids in school pack. You've heard us talk, heard us talk about some, you know, some big money that's being funneled into these school board races um, here in Pennsylvania and, and across the state. And it, it's just not good for our kids, right? So in our communities, in our local areas, I know how hard it can be for school board candidates for to get, you know, name recognition out there in the community and kind of get people invested in these kind of quote unquote off-year elections. Yet these are the elections right now that are going to have the most impact, right? On our kids and our community, right? So it's absolutely vital people get, get involved. So somebody wants to kind of come and say, hey, Adrian, hey, David, um, I, you know, I heard you on this thing. I, I definitely want to get involved. How can I get involved with the campaign and how can I help?
Yeah. So thank you for, for, for that because it is all about getting involved. And I think those are the conversations, right? That we're, we've been having at the doors with people too. One, alerting them, hey, do you know there's an election coming up, right? And do you know how critical it is that you be involved at your local level? Because this is what impacts you, right, is the local level, right? So, um, Pen Ridge United, we have a Facebook group. So if you are on Facebook or Instagram, uh, you could find us there at Pen Ridge United. Um, we also have an email address, which is penridgeunited@gmail.com. If, if you're not on social media, you can email us. Things that we need in order to support our campaign, of course, number one is donations. I think that's been the one eye-opening thing for all four of us, is how much it takes to support a campaign, right? And think about how big our district is, right? 7,000 plus doors to hit, right? To get information out to, right? Our fundraising goal right now is between $15,000 and $20,000. And so donations to help us be able to continue to spread our message, reach more people. That definitely is something that we would completely, absolutely appreciate. Um, also volunteers to help us hit those doors, canvassing. Um, we've been meeting every Saturday and Sunday. If it's not all four of us, it's one of us, but we've been meeting volunteers, um, every Saturday and Sunday at the Dunkin' Donuts in Silverdale, um, on Beringer Avenue at 11 o'clock. Um, and so if you'd like to come out, even if you have no experience with canvassing, you can go out with one of us, or you can go out with another more experienced volunteer, get the hang of it. You can, if you, even if you don't have time to do it on that Saturday or Sunday, you can take the package, the literature and everything, and do it on your own time, right? Not everybody has, like this weekend, Sunday, I went out, I went out with my family for a block of three to four hours and, and we just hit it hard and knocked doors off. But you may only have a half an hour, you may only have 15 minutes, you may only have an hour. And you can get to as many and just sort of chunk it off based on, you know, what your, your availability is to do that. And so we would so much appreciate being able to do that because it's a lot of ground to, to cover here in Pen Ridge. Um, I think the other is, and that's where Dawn is this evening, um, having people that would host us at their homes, in their backyard, at their churches or what have you, to introduce us to their neighbors, to their community members, to their families, to their friends, right? So that we can have this dialogue. I find that I learned so much from meeting with voters and community members, just to have a conversation, right? They ask me these similar questions to what you ask, right? But it gives them an opportunity to ask me something in return, to get further clarification, right? So these little small meet and greets, right? You could already be having something and invite us to pop in, or you could plan it all around us being there, however you'd like to do it. Um, so, you know, getting people to do things like that. But then I think number one, come out and vote. This is an off-year cycle, so we need to come out like it is a presidential election. We need you out there to vote. Um, and then of course, as we get closer and closer to November 2nd, we will be looking for volunteers to man the polling, um, locations for us. Um, I know Dawn and Carolyn, their strategy from the primary was they picked a, a location and they stayed. My strategy was I tried to hit as many polling locations as I could. I wasn't successful. I think I got to 15. I didn't get to all of them, but I was exhausted, right?
I bet.
But, but getting people to, to man the polling locations, right? To continue to share our message, right, and hand out literature. So I, those would be the things. David, did I leave anything out?
No. No, I, I mean, I can't stress the fact of voting more than anything else. I mean, we looked at the, we see the voting numbers all the time. It's depressing how little we actually get involved in our own democracy. Be involved. You know, you want us out there? Vote. We want to be there. We act, we all have the passion to want to be there. We all want to be the change that you're looking for. We're all here to listen to what you want to say and what you're looking for. We are willing to take all that information in and find the best avenue to make it all happen. But we need you to vote. We need you to help. This is, again, I said from the very beginning, we are the bridge between the community and the school board. We can only be that if you help us get there.
Yeah.
We can only speak so loud, we can only do so many things. We need you.
Yeah. Yeah. There's nothing more valuable than someone sharing their personal story, their personal experience, their lived experience, right? And as David's saying, we can advocate, we can make a space for you at the table, but your voice is even more powerful than ours, right? Like I said in the beginning, I've heard from so many, right? But I need those people to come forward and, and share their experience too. And I think the other thing I forgot to mention, we do have a fundraiser coming up.
I was going to bring it up.
August 26th. Awesome. At Bishop Winery. Um, and so if you have not gotten your ticket, there's an opportunity to get a ticket there to be a sponsor, um, to donate. Definitely. Definitely, um, and again, you could find that information on our Facebook page or on our Instagram or email us um, at penridgeunited@gmail.com, and we can send you the link to register for that, um, for um, for that fundraiser. Um, and so that's just gonna be a fun time, right? But for you, again, to be able to connect to us, ask us questions. That's the biggest thing that I see not happening between the two sides, is we take something and we believe it, but we don't take that opportunity to say, you know what? Did you really mean what you said by that? Like, could you provide me a little bit more clarity? Like, what exactly? Like, having that dialogue and exchange is so, so very important. So I'm looking forward to the twenty-six to be able to meet some new faces, see some faces I already know in order to be able to to have that dialogue.
Well, fantastic. Well, we got a shout out from Ross, and Ross said, good stuff, got my vote. Uh, hope we can get out folks to the next general school board meeting too, uh, that is on Monday, the twenty-third at six thirty PM. Um, and, uh, you know, they do, they do stream that stuff and they do put up the video live too as well, so people can check in to see what's going on and how kind of important it is to get involved. I can't tell you, uh, like, I'll echo everything that Adrian just said and that David said, you know, that agreed with it too as well, is that, you know, to get out there, and I would also put in another plug, is that get involved early, right? Um, and take baby steps. If you're worried about doing this work and just get involved and you see that it's actually kind of interesting. Um, I manned the polls, uh, last time round when the school board elections, and I learned a whole lot about kind of folks in my community that I don't normally kind of connect with, right? I was able to have conversations with people that I, you know, I just don't live next to. It wasn't my polling station. It was it was kind of over in Hilltown Township. And I was like, I sat there and had to have conversations with people about stuff. It's absolutely good. And then, when this election is over, right, once we kind of get them past the the victory lap, cuz that's what we're gonna do, right, everybody, we're gonna get them rest there, we can't go away, right? Do we have to stay involved, right? Because their ability to accomplish things for our kids is only gonna be as strong as our ability and our willingness to back them in what they're doing. So, um, one hundred percent, uh, y'all, listen, I I I congratulate you and thank you about, you know, um, putting in the time and the effort. I understand how trying it is, um, to run these campaigns. Um, and the fact that that you all have been out knocking so many doors and talking to so many people is great. Um, I'd love to have you back on before, obviously, the election. Um, you're welcome back anytime, um, as issues come up to make sure that we get as many kind of ears and eyes and hands in your campaign as possible. So, um, Adrian and David, thank you so much for coming on the show tonight. Um, I appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
No, thank you for having us. This was great.
Oh, you got it.
Thank you so much.
Oh, you got it.
David, thank you for arranging this. David arranged it, so thank you so much, David, for doing that.
David and I have got a long Facebook, uh, Facebook messaging chat getting all together tonight. But like, like I said at the top of the show too as well, we hope to kind of find some time where we can get Dawn and Carolyn back on on the show too as well. We wanna make sure, and again, any combination to kind of come back on, it's good. So listen, everybody who's listening tonight, um, this is kind of the point. We're gonna go to a little bit of a break. Um, we're gonna go over a little of a break. We'll have a musical interlude. If you do wanna have stuff, you know, stuff that's on your mind, you wanna call in, you wanna add to the conversation, um, you can shut down your, or you can put the mute on your YouTube and you can head on over to Riverside. Those links are in the, uh, are in the show notes for today. You can click on that. Just make sure that you kind of, uh, you turn your volume down. Otherwise, you're gonna get the feedback and it's gonna be a big mess and I'm gonna get upset and it's gonna be like that. Uh, but if you do wanna stick around for the, uh, for the call-in, call-ins section and some wind-up comments, um, please stick around. Uh, but for now, Adrian and David, uh, thanks so much for coming coming in tonight. Um, it's great talking to you and I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
All right, you got it. This is Kevin Mahoney, editor and founder of Raging Chicken. We're gonna go to a quick break and we'll be back in a few minutes with your calls, your thoughts, and my closing comments. This is Kevin Mahoney, editor and founder. Remember, head on over to patreon.com slash RC Press and you can become a patron for as little as five bucks a month. We'll be back right after this quick break. Hey, everybody. Welcome, welcome back, welcome back. Uh, this is Kevin Mahoney, editor and founder of Raging Chicken. Man, that was a great, great discussion, uh, with Adrian King and David O'Donnell, candidates for the Pen Ridge School District. Um, and they are running as kind of like a slate with, uh, Pen Ridge United. We're gonna have some links for you to click on that'll get you over to their, to their website, their Facebook page. Um, and we hope to have, uh, uh, Dawn Curran, Curran and, uh, Carolyn Ciarino. I'm probably butchering names at this point. I'm tired. My apologies, but have it in the future. But, uh, you know, look, um, this is the kind of stuff that, um, we can do here with Raging Chicken, right? Um, to have folks on, to talk about what's happening on i- in kind of local school districts in addition to the national politics and stuff and the one that we do on Fridays. Um, and, you know, it's it's so fantastic that we've got so many folk, so many people who've been, you know, stepping forward to sharing our stuff, um, becoming patrons of the show. Um, that's been great. Just wanna make sure that, you know, so a bunch of folks are still kind of listening. Wanna make sure you hit that subscribe button, um, and YouTube. Make sure that you like this stream and please, 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 share out this show, uh, with everybody. Um, the YouTube video, uh, of this tonight's show will be available, um, shortly after the close of this, um, and I encourage you to share it out. Uh, Christopher just kind of jumped in and said, I hope people share this interview locally for good exposure. That's something that you can do, doesn't cost you a dime, is by basically taking what you saw tonight, right? Taking this video, hearing these interviews and sending it out to your networks, right? Um, that's how, you know, that's a simple click away, right? Now, that's no substitution for talking to individual voters by doing the door knocking that you heard kind of Adrian talking about tonight. Um, but it certainly is, it kind of adds into that exposure. Um, it is very difficult, um, to run for school board, to kind of get that kind of exposure, because, look, a lot of folks just don't pay attention to kind of local politics. Um, and that's where you all come in, so I appreciate that. So, um, if anybody does wanna call in, if anybody has got something to say, you got a comment, you got a question, you got thoughts, um, make sure you can hit the links that are right down there in Riverside. I'm gonna send the, I'm gonna post the link right now to, uh, ba-ba-ba-ba-ba, where is it? I'm gonna have to broaden my screen. Hold on a second. Uh, in order to kind of get that invite Here we go. I always love this part when I get to kind of, uh, expose my, uh, so I'm just, I'm dropping a link into YouTube right, YouTube right now. Um, that's a link for riverside.fm studio out the coop. Uh, if you click on that, make sure that you, um, you lower your volume on YouTube. You can even close your YouTube browser window after that. Um, and you'll be listening through Riverside. There's a bit of a delay in the stream between what is on Riverside and what is going up on YouTube, so that if you leave that on, there's gonna be feedback and it's gonna, it's just gonna be not a good experience for those, uh, for most folks. Um, so if you do wanna kind of, um, join in, please join in right now. You could still kind of, anything that you've got to say on, uh, our YouTube comments, you can put there too as well. I'd be happy to kind of address those, um, as well. And it doesn't just have to be about tonight's show. If anything else is on your mind, you think we should be knowing, that we should know about, uh, let us know. Um, my closing thoughts, um, for a bit on this are 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 twofold. Now, we've seen what's happened, we've seen what's going on in, um, these Bucks County school, school districts, right? And I mentioned this a little bit on the show, but you heard me talk about this before, that, um, there is a a strategy that's backed by a significant amount of money to support school board candidates that are waging these kind of culture wars, right, around kind of critical race theory or, you know, around the kind of like, you know, the vaccine is a lie, it is a fiction, all that kind of stuff. And, you know, one of the organizations, if you will go to kind of the the Keeping Kids in School PAC, for example, um, they have listed a bunch of candidates that they support, right? And that's backed by some millionaires, um, so a national organization, they started, got their roots right here in Bucks County in the eastern part of the state. Now they're running across Pennsylvania. And they're supporting candidates, some of these candidates. Um, as we've seen, Cyril Micalakos, and he's documented this in his column for the Bucks County Courier-Times. Some of these folks are, you know, went to the insurrection on January sixth or supported it or have kind of like, you know, been playing around in QAnon spheres and talking about these QAnon, um, um, conspiracies in there. And, you know, this is the last thing that we need on our school boards, right? One one thing's that we absolutely have to have are people that are level-headed. Look, there may be people that are, that get elected to school board that I might not, you know, I might have disagreements with politically or whatever like this. But you, the goal of having someone on the school board is that they're gonna be acting in the best interest of the kids, not carrying out some political kind of like agenda that is based on fiction and propaganda especially, right? I mean, to set the tone for our kids and our community by like waging a war in school boards based upon propaganda, stuff that's based upon, you know, you know, these like, I don't know, well-funded lie campaigns is just, is a disaster. Not just for our schools, but also for our communities. You know, we saw in Pensbury, I'm pretty sure it was Pensbury, the Pensbury School District, you had a kind of shoving mask breakout at a school board meeting, right? Uh, as you heard, um, you know, us talk about tonight, is there's concerns about what's happening here at Pen Ridge. We've got this, it's going to be, I I pretty much guarantee it, this coming Monday at six thirty PM, um, there's the Pen Ridge School Board, School Board Meeting. And they're gonna be talking about DEI, that's diversity, equity, inclusion, right? The idea that the school wants to make sure that it is kind of preparing to welcome all kids, making sure, you know, we meet every student's kind of educational needs, understand what those needs are in order to make sure that our schools are welcoming, inclusive, and are gonna, you know, be there for our kids, right? I mean, what I called tonight on the show, I don't know, common sense, right, what we should be doing. That's coming forward and it, there's all this vitriol going around, all this propaganda, you know, lies about, you know, they're trying to like, you know, shame white kids into hating themselves and they're lying and they're a secret communist and all this stuff. I mean, like, at first, it astounds me that this is, these are actually adults that are saying this stuff, right? Um, that, you know, and the fact that they're, some of them are already on our school board and other ones are running to be on our school board, and there's a chance that they're gonna be the people that are gonna be making decisions over my kid's schooling is deeply troubling. So one of the things I wanna say, so in the up, in the upcoming, you know, I mentioned this a little bit, I think, on, uh, last week's show, or maybe I said this on Friday too as well. So I'm gonna be looking for ways to as well that we can kind of lend what we're doing here at Raging Chicken, right? To making sure that we get as many of these school board candidates on, that we can talk about the importance of these local elections. Um, I forewarned folks a few weeks back that we're gonna take a little bit of a local turn, uh, local regional turn um, um, on Out to Coop Live, uh, for the next few weeks, especially as we're back to school. We've got the issues of, you know, these school board elections coming up in addition to, um, the spike in the 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 Delta variant of COVID um, and the concerns of these kind of, you know, kind of, I don't know, racially charged culture wars that are being waged in these things. So, um, those are all big concerns, so we hope that you'll get involved. So listen, um, I'm gonna, um, put the links in the show notes tonight about how you can get in contact with Pen Ridge United. That's the four candidates that are running for school board here in the Pen Ridge District, um, that we definitely think that you should get out and support. Even if you're not in the district, you can get over their campaign. You can help with door knocking. You can help by contributing to their campaign. Um, anything that you can do, um, to make sure here. And if you're in the Palisades School District or the Central Bucks School District or in the Pensbury School District, you wanna look for those candidates that are actually talking common sense instead of nonsense and make sure that you're you're lending a hand, um, kind of in your neck of the woods. Well, listen, um, I appreciate everybody tuning in tonight, you know, thanks to Mary Ann, thanks to Ross, thanks to Christopher, uh, thanks for the comments. I appreciate it. Um, and kind of like always, uh, we'll be back here again next week. Um, we've got a couple irons in the fire, uh, for who we're gonna have on next week. Um, but then, well, we've got another show planned for the thirtieth, which will take a little bit step back from the school boards, um, and kind of, um, talk a little what's going on in Bucks County. Um, a lot of good stuff headed for you. One show note that I wanted to mention to folks, um, you may have noticed this already, the past couple of weeks, uh, we haven't done the Wednesday show with Cyril Micalako. Um, I I talked to Cyril yesterday or maybe two days ago now. Time is like warping for me lately. Um, and he's just been working like, you know, working like a man then. Um, so he's been, he's been, it's been incredibly difficult for him to find the time, and so that's, so I said, look, look, the whole idea here is that we wanna make sure that this is a a place where we can, you know, that's a good space, not like a burden and things like this. So, um, that when when things settle down again, when things get rolling, my semester gets rolling and things like this, we'll be able to kind of get back into that, um, short little show. He's got a bunch of interviews that he's planning on doing and putting up, so, um, that'll be coming there. But just wanting you to know, you're not missing anything. It's not like you just, you know, we forgot to upload or forgot to do it. It's we're taking kind of a short kind of pre-back-to-school, uh, um, break and I'll let you know when we're gonna be coming back. Um, on next Friday, another thing too as well, um, there might be a time change for Friday's show. Um, frankly, I've got, I've got some kind of electrical issues that are going on in the house and I got some guy coming to, uh, kind of take a look at some stuff. So, um, I'm gonna have to kind of work around that. So just, uh, stay alert for when we're gonna do the show on Friday. So thank you, everybody. Listen, uh, kinda wish you all well and I hope that you're gonna get out there and, uh, make sure that you're lending your voice and your labor um, to, uh, you know, uh, kind of fighting for what's right in whatever way that you can. Um, we could all contribute in a variety of different ways, um, to make sure that our communities are safe, make sure our communities are are protected, um, to make sure that we're expanding democracy as opposed to kind of closing it off and making sure, um, for the love of God, making sure that, uh, our kids are gonna go back to the best possible learning environment they can. So anyways, this is Kevin Mahoney, editor and founder of Raging Chicken. We're gonna call this a night. Head on over to patreon.com slash RC Press, where you can be a patron for as little as five bucks a month. Um, looking forward to talking to you soon, everybody.